Reyes has more from Silmar, Gil.
Well, Yana, for many of our fellow Angelinos who find themselves homeless, this could be a way to totally turn their lives around. They're called Citation Clinics. This one's in Silmar. And basically, people who are unsheltered show up and negotiate to have their fines and tickets stricken from the record books. And all they have to do is volunteer for community service. Many times, this leads to full-time jobs.
Simply showing up to the clinic gets you free food, a haircut, and shower. But Nicole Adriano, who is homeless, mostly looks forward to having her fines forgiven.
Everything trafficked, just not paying my stuff on time, and it just doubles it. I don't even know. All I know is like over $3,000.
Edgar Santiago says he's racked up $20,000 in fees for offenses like riding his bicycle at night without a light.
And it just kept adding and adding and adding.
But relief through the L.A. City Attorney's Office Homeless Court and Citation Clinics.
We say, "We're going to dismiss these citations and tickets, but in exchange, we're asking you to do community service, something that benefits you or benefits the community."
Gina Di Domenico from the City Attorney's Office says people can work off fines for minor offenses by volunteering for nonprofits, like the L.A. Conservation Corps, New Directions, the Weingard Center, and Chrysalis. The City Attorney's Office recently honored these service providers for not only helping veterans and the environment, but also for providing people who are homeless a chance to work off fines too expensive to ever pay.
We actually have had several folks that have found jobs through this. One individual was actually hired by his service provider. Another went through Chrysalis's job training program and, for the first time, found a job as a tutor, first time in his life.
So you don't mind doing community service?
No, no, I should don't. You have to pay somehow.
I would do it. I would do it. I would do it in R.B. I mean, rather than pay, yes.
Haircuts, showers, and starting over with a clean slate. In Silmar, I'm Gil Reyes for L.A. This Week.
In its first year, the City Attorney's Office has dismissed some 315 fractions through their Citation Clinics. Well, a Jewish synagogue in Koreatown's Miracle Mile believes in giving back to its religion by giving to others. Anna Marcos has more on the grand opening of the Karsh Family Social Service Center.
The singing makes for a great housewarming, as does the mezuzah, a scroll of biblical origin which gets pressed into the doorway of the new Karsh Family Social Service Center. It signifies Jewish faith. Here at the Woolshire Boulevard Temple, it's not enough for parishioners to have faith in God, but in helping neighbors in the community as well. The new dental clinic is one of the free services offered. Also included: free eye care and exams, legal aid, counseling, ESL and citizenship classes, and a food pantry.
We wanted to reach out to this community, show what Jews are about, the tikkun olam, that we live that, healing the world is part of our heritage, it's part of our culture, and we wanted to be good neighbors.
We got lucky in life, and I'm only so happy to give back to people who need it.
You're looking at the brand-new food pantry. The center has already served about 1,000 people since its soft opening several months ago, but with this grand opening, it is now ready to welcome the entire community.
This is an extraordinary neighborhood. It's one of the most ethnically and religiously diverse neighborhoods in America. About 70% of the people in this neighborhood do not speak English at home as their primary language. It's a poor immigrant community.
For temple worshippers, the services are much needed in an area where 1/3 of adults go hungry at least some of the time, and about 1 in 4 families live below the poverty level. The parishioners answer, faith in action. I'm Anna Marcos for L.A. This Week.
For more information on the free services offered, you can visit karshcenter.org. While clean buses are slowly but surely becoming the next big thing in L.A., and Metro is heading on a road that promises a cleaner future for us all. Rasha Goel explains.
It's official. This natural gas bus is ready to hit the road as it becomes the 900th and final vehicle to complete Metro's Clean Air Fleet.
These buses together deliver about 650,000 miles of service per week. The new Flyer bus also boasts the highest reliability in the Metro fleet.
The XN40 bus features enhanced amenities for people with disabilities, including much more space for passengers in wheelchairs. Officials say the bus will serve a large ridership.
Nearly 1 million people a day ride our buses. About 80%, maybe upwards of 80% of the 1.4 million people that use our system today ride buses.
Officials say it's really about helping move people through the region safely, but more than that, it's about the health and well-being of every Angelino.
These are CNG buses, so we're not having the dirty, belching diesel buses that pollute the air. You're not going to be affixed when you're behind these buses.
Officials are calling it the 40-foot dream machine that will not only transform the way we all get around, but will also allow for a breath of fresh air. I'm Rasha Goel for L.A. This Week.
Now, according to Metro, this delivery completes an order for new CNG buses that make up 40% of the current fleet. Well, sure, we need more public parks in L.A., but how about one on your usually quiet street? Well, some are saying, "Not in my neighborhood," as the city considers what to do next with the Silver Lake Reservoir. Gil Reyes has more.
What we do know is the now-drained Silver Lake Reservoir will be refilled to its former glory. But what to do with the actual site? Well, opinions vary.
We do know that the fences need to be taken down so that the community can access this green space. Our community, our children, our senior citizens are crying out for more park space in this city, and this is a huge opportunity to do that.
But others fear a park will increase traffic, reduce parking, and turn their neighborhood into something similar to Disneyland.
I don't know why we need to entertainmentize the reservoir. I don't, we already have Echo Park, we already have Griffith Park, we already have the zoo.
Silver Lake residents sound off at this community meeting at Marshall High School.
At this point, the decision for what happens in the reservoir for the long term is really not a Department of Water and Power issue per se, it's really a community issue. And some of the ideas range from return it to the way it was historically to let people closer to the water.
Everybody here might have differences in viewpoints and differences in opinions, but it's very important that we respect each other, that we listen to each other.
The lake was drained last summer to build a new pipeline. City officials say water will slowly begin coming back starting this May, with a full refill expected by springtime 2018. Also very important to note that the water that will be here will be used solely for aesthetics, as open reservoirs for drinking water sources are now banned by the state. In the meantime, city officials are considering what to do with all 96 acres of this site, which, at 96 acres, is even bigger than Disneyland.
It's your duty to turn this into a city park.
But others say a park with special events and live music would also cause unwanted noise.
And you know, NIMBY is a word that nobody likes to be tagged with, the "not in my backyard" acronym. And I say, "You know, tag me that. Go ahead, call me that, because I don't think there's anything wrong with standing up for your community."
In Silver Lake, I'm Gil Reyes for L.A. This Week.
Well, what used to be a gritty, industrial hideaway for artists is becoming more and more family-friendly. Downtown's Arts District is changing, recently opening a park to accommodate its newer residents. Gil Reyes shows us.
Three, two, one. Congratulations! It's amazing. This is the first city-sponsored park in the Arts District. We're really excited to have it. It was a community-driven design process, which is exciting, and through that process, we were able to get a kid area, a performance area, get some murals here, some art, areas for people to sit down, enjoy a cup of coffee, have something to drink, more green, more trees. And we've got to do more of this, because this area is transforming.
Downtown Councilman Jose Wezar describing L.A.'s new Arts District, once a seedy, hidden gem for creative types, is now booming with new residents and development. Apartments, restaurants, and startups are popping up, and expected soon, a pair of 58-story residential skyscrapers.
Downtown L.A. is really becoming a lot more family-friendly, so it's great to see a park like this open up, where you can take your kids, your dog. Just have a nice day.
You know, this park was really on its deathbed just not too long ago. There was some designs for it, but the money did not come through. We stepped in, provided $1.8 million. We moved some money around to make it a reality.
Contaminated soil also delayed the park's opening, but it's all gone now. So are the days of cheap rent in the Arts District. To soften the blow of gentrification, the city reaches out to artists who remain. One way is to have the park's murals constantly changing.
So every six to eight months, we will be selecting a new artist to create a design, and we'll be reaching out to you guys for your response and for your input.
Helping to keep the art in the Arts District. In downtown L.A., I'm Gil Reyes for L.A. This Week.
The half-acre park sits on Fifth and Hewitt Streets next to the Earth Cafe. While heading north to Council District 2, where the power of social media is helping residents clean up their neighborhood, Anna Marcos has more.
Nature merged with the digital age at this Valley Glen Community Cleanup. Some teams did the traditional cleaning, while others went door-to-door, alerting residents to a new social media app called MyLA311. It encourages you to get involved in cleanups and city government while earning points in your app that go towards prizes.
There were flyers all around school, so I decided to come and join.
So what we wanted to do is get a cleanup going, because that's one of the best ways to kind of teach people about city services and work together on a good project that benefits everybody.
About 50 volunteers, both young and old, hit the streets, picking up trash and raking leaves. So how dirty were these leafy streets?
We're very fortunate. Actually, the neighborhood is pretty clean compared to other parts of Los Angeles, but it doesn't mean that we don't have some work to do.
Residents of the community, once in a while, see sofas, see alleys that are dirty.
Well, okay, it was a little dirty, but at the end of the day, a pristine park and neighborhood. And some volunteers even used the MyLA311 app to earn some extra brownie points. I'm Anna Marcos for L.A. This Week.
A new development will soon take shape in South L.A. Finding a job for people with criminal records just got easier, and donations come pouring in for members of the military. All these stories in City B. The Los Angeles City Council approved the Reef Project, a mixed-use, high-end development that will add 1,400 apartments and condos near downtown's Fashion District. The project at Washington and Broadway includes a pair of residential buildings, each towering over 30 stories, as well as retail and commercial areas. Many community advocates oppose the development, saying it will displace thousands of low-income residents. The council is working on an agreement with the developer to contribute nearly $24 million toward affordable housing and other community benefits. The City Council also approved an ordinance that would restrict employers from asking job applicants about criminal convictions until a conditional offer of employment has been made. The legislation would remove the box from job applications that ask candidates about their criminal record. Los Angeles joins the federal government dozens of cities and states to ban the box. The ordinance becomes law on January 1st. The citywide policy would apply to city contractors and private employers with 10 or more employees. Community groups gathered at City Hall before the vote to support the initiative.
L.A. is a city of hope, and that we can recognize that people who accept the mistakes that they made and look to be able to move forward in their lives.
LAX employees donated personal care items to the Bob Hope Hollywood USO, a nonprofit that serves troops and military families across Central and Southern California. The items were collected from airport employees, local businesses, and community organizations. Active-duty military personnel and their families can stay at the center for up to 24 hours.
They can sleep, eat, shower, everything. So toiletry items are a huge thing, as well as, like I said, the nonperishable food items as well.
Well, parks and trees go hand in hand, but keeping those trees alive and well during a drought is a challenge, one that's being met head-on through an innovative approach. It took an army of over 200 volunteers, a public-private partnership, and a lot of good, hard work, but Alleejen Park is looking forward to shadier days ahead.
In the last few years, parks all over the city of Los Angeles have lost thousands of trees, and City Plants is partnering with Wreckin' Parks to try to reforest the park and make sure that we're planting trees that are going to last into a drier climate.
That means planting smarter. With the help of the Department of Water and Power, seedlings will be encased in something called a land-life cocoon, which helps the seedlings hold water over the course of several months. Officials say planting trees saves energy.
Shade trees will reduce the need for electricity by increasing the coolness in the surrounding area, and it will also result in lowering many of the neighbors' bills where the shade trees are planted.
The aim is to restore Alleejen Park's tree canopy, which has long been in decline, with partners including Office Depot, the California Conservation Corps, and the Arbor Day Foundation. Residents are stepping forward and looking toward the future.
So when you're putting these trees in the ground, you're doing so much more than making a difference just in this park, but you're changing the lives of the people who live around here and the people of Los Angeles.
It's really nice to think about coming back here in 20 years and saying, "Oh, I planted that tree, and look, it's this big now, and it's contributed to this place being more beautiful."
The renewal project was made possible in part by a grant from the Arbor Day Foundation. While looking for a unique piece of art or craft, well, you may find it at the Echo Park Craft Fair, then enjoy the sights and sounds of the annual community parade. And where can you find tons of snow in the city? We'll tell you. All this and this week's things to do. The Echo Park Craft Fair is a two-day art and design event in Silver Lake, featuring work by over 120 artists and drawing thousands of guests. The fair has become a pioneering showcase for the thriving makers movement. Featuring a curation of work from some of the finest artists in America, the fair celebrates innovators creating in a vast array of mediums, from ceramics to jewelry, perfumery, to clothing design, woodworking, to fabric art. Fashion designers and retail buyers flock to the market to source products, ignite ideas, and fuel creative inspiration. Don't miss it on December 10th and 11th at Mac Senate Studios located at 1215 Bates Avenue. For more, visit echopecraftfair.com. Also in Echo Park, the historic community will host the annual Echo Park Community Parade. Thousands of residents from Echo Park and surrounding neighborhoods sit on the sidelines to watch the 50-plus parade entries, including Santa, celebrate the holiday season. This year's parade theme is celebrating the artists of Echo Park, and it takes place on Saturday, December 10th, from 11:00 to 2:00 p.m. The parade route is along Sunset Boulevard in Echo Park from Vin Scully Avenue to Park Avenue. For more, visit echopecommunityparade.com. Playing more than 70 tons of snow with three slides and a snow field, and get into the holiday spirit by giving back at the free sixth-annual Studio City Winter Family Festival at Studio City Recreation Center and Beeman Park. Live music by local schools and community groups, photos with Santa, face painting, gingerbread house decorating, crafts, restaurant sampling, holiday card-making for the troops, a photo booth, and more. Help others by donating canned, packaged food, new unwrapped toys, and other items, and be entered to win gift baskets. It all takes place Sunday, December 11th, from 1:00 to 4:00 p.m. And that's a look at some things to do. Well, that's going to do it for this edition. I'm Yana Kay, and from all of us here at L.A. This Week, thanks for joining us. A reminder that you can catch us online at lacityview.org. You can also follow and like us on Facebook. We'll see you back here next week for more of L.A. This Week.
Hi, I'm Gil Reyes.
And I'm Rasha Goel. Welcome to another edition of Latitude, the latest in business and trade news from the Port of Los Angeles.
In this edition...
You'll find out why the latest state-of-the-art maritime vessel calling at the Port of L.A. is nicknamed the Hawaiian Hybrid.
Let's get started exploring this edition of Latitude.
The Port of Los Angeles has long been a focal point in maritime modernization. It's the first port in the world to plug a container vessel into shoreside power to reduce emissions at birth. The port is also home to the world's first hybrid electric tugboat. And now, the port is proud to harbor another maritime innovation. This time, a state-of-the-art vessel uniquely designed to meet the needs of shippers moving cargo to and from the Aloha State. Meet Peja Hawaii's Marjorie Sea.
All right, now we are live. There we are. Okay, everybody is ready for their big debut out there? Okay, we're live on Channel 35, we're live on the internet streaming, and let's go ahead and, we've taken roll. Well, let's go ahead and approve the minutes, shall we? Without objection, we'll go ahead and actually open the roll to approve the minutes.
Mr. President, you need, Council needs a mover and a seconder for approval of the minutes, sir.
Yes, and we'll go ahead and do that now. So Mr. Wezar, and we'll move, and Ms. Martinez will second. Next item, please.
Commendatory resolutions for approval.
Okay, Mr. Rue moves, and thank you very much. Mr. Wesson second, thank you. All right, next item, please.
Mr. President, there are requests to receive and file items 1B, F, J, N, and T, and as much as the liens were paid.
All right, colleagues, without objection, that'll be the order. Okay, thank you very much. Next item, please.
Item 1 is an item notice for public hearing, and, sir, there is a card on 1A.
All right, let's go ahead and take that card now, shall we?
Mr. President, subsequently, there are cards on L, 1L, and 1S as well.
Okay, we'll go ahead and take those cards, and we'll take that item up now as well. Thank you very much. First, Mr. Zuma Dog, followed by our John Walsh. And I say "our" John Walsh, and all due respect and love. So come on up, guys. Mr. Dog, Mr. Walsh, last call. Mr. Dog, not here? Come on up, Mr. Walsh. Don't yell, come on. It's Friday. We've heard you all week. All right, Mr. Dog is not here. We'll go ahead and file his information that he wasn't here. Please don't talk to everybody that's here. Talk to us. Come on, you know the rules.
Okay, John Walsh blogging at HollywoodHighlands.org, and the chair expects the 73-year-old man to run. If I drop dead here, my mother will sue you. She's still alive. Okay, let's talk about number one. This is building and safety, nuisance abatement, violation, here protest, objections, everybody. This whole city needs a lot of nuisance abatement, because there are a lot of nuisances in this city. Number nine, everyone check these maps, because when you get up one morning, especially if you're black and Hispanic, and you see they're building for rich white people in your neighborhood, and now...
Okay, you're actually on item nine now, which is fine, so we'll go ahead and put a minute on your clock for that as well.
And, see, all this heckling, and these people believe in the first...
Stay on the agenda, please.
Final maps. I got three minutes.
Oh, you know what? Actually, public comment is closed on nine. You only had one minute. Thank you very much. All right, thank you. Thanks, Mr. Walsh. Now you're disrupting the meeting. We're going to ask you to leave if you're disrupting the meeting. You had your minute on that item.
Mr. President, just for clarification, items 1E, G, H, K, L, there is a request to continue those items to January 10th, 2017, sir.
All right, that'll be the order without objection. We have no other cards on those remaining items? On one?
No, sir. And just for the record, let's, Council is considering and voting on items...
Okay, we got Mr. Eric Previn. Come on up for your minute on item one.
Thank you, sir. It's Eric Previn from the 2nd District. I live in Studio City, and I am running for the office of mayor. This is a lien item, sir. One of the big concerns about the way the city collects revenue on these building and safety violations that go into the files, they sort of dig them out. Bonin has pretended to look closely, and then, when they did look closely, they came up with an additional $10 cost to send a good certified letter to the recipient, so they can't say, "I never got it." But these are for highly suspicious, you've heard people, when they do testify, remark about how these seem to be old dormant things that are just pernicious for Angelinos who are trying in a city where the rent is at the highest possible percentage of income anywhere in America practically. So what we're hoping, sir, is that you will undo the Auto View program. You can read about it on City Watch L.A. today. I wrote about Xerox, your father...
You're not on the subject. Once again, you're way off the agenda. There, your time's gone. You know the rules. Okay, you've got one more minute for general public comment.
General public comment, sure. I guess I'll roll into the comment about, that we wrote about with my brother Joshua Previn on City Watch in the last 24 hours or so. This is a program that Mayor Garcetti signed off on, and Bonin and others have rolled out with Celita Reynolds of the Department of Transportation that literally scans license plates. It's like sending a submarine out into the North Atlantic. It's not to get terrorists or to protect our communities, it's actually to get parking enforcement more effectively, so that you can send folks to the impoundment yard, sir, where Eric Rose, also of that lobbying firm, Englander Canaveral Allen, runs the show, and where they perniciously extort people. They take their vehicles so they can't get to work, because they can't pay the onerous $63 penalty for a meter. We need to reform parking here in Los Angeles would be one of my platform issues when I run for mayor, sir. And I appreciate your taking the time, but do not insult members of the public like Mr. Walsh or anybody else by your game of interrupting speakers. It's inappropriate.
Thank you very much. Your time is up. Have a nice weekend, Mr. Previn. All right, with that, we're going to go ahead and take Kimberly Maramontes. Kimberly Maramontes on item one. Is Kimberly here? Oh, there you are, okay. Good morning. Take your time. The others were frequent flyers that come every meeting, so to you, we welcome. Thank you very much.
I need a translator for my grandmother.
Absolutely. Give us one moment.
They sent me a letter because I have some sort of light. That's why they sent me this paper. And they're charging me $529, and I don't know why they're charging me that.
The lights were not connected, they were not doing anything. They came to my property, they charged me that, but that was 9 years ago. So, I want to know why. Why is this happening? I want to know why is this taking so long? They just sent me a paper that says that I have to pay, and I want to know why is this taking so long? That's what I want to see. I want to see what is going to happen with this. Okay, this is regarding 1S S and Sam.
Okay, we're going to continue this item for 30 days to allow you to work with the departments, as well as the council district? And so, we'll go ahead, if that's okay with you, we'll continue this until January 10.
But why are you going to do this?
Well, we can vote and approve the lien right now, or we can go ahead and continue it to give you an opportunity to work it out. Let me know what you'd like to do.
Right now, I don't have any money to pay, so...
So, we'll go ahead and continue it. And so, you can work with staff, and we can try to help you out a little bit. So, if you want to go ahead and go over here to your -- the side of chambers, to your left? Okay, thank you very much. Thank you. Okay, so, that item will be continued until January 10 for 30 days. And seeing no other speakers on item 1, let's go ahead and open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the vote. 13 ayes. All right, that item's approved. Let's go ahead and have a -- we've got presentations as well. Mr. Sadio, the floor is yours. Councilmember Sadio.
Mr. President? Mr. President?
Yes, sir.
Yes, Mr. President and colleagues, good morning. I am very excited, because today we're here to honor a parallel governing body, one that is important to our democracy, one that's important to the conduct of the business that we do, and that is the leadership, both outgoing and incoming, of the Los Angeles Superior Court. I want to begin by thanking Judge Abe Khan for helping us coordinate this. And I also want to note my dear friend, known to many of you for his summer/fall VIP mixer, Felipe Placencia, from the Mexican-American Bar Association PAC. He has helped us also bring this to the fore today. As you know, members, the Los Angeles Superior Court is the largest court system in the world, with over 460 judges, 87 commissioners, and over 5,000 court employees throughout the city and the county of Los Angeles. And this work is done, it is essentially the point in which the people of our community meet their government. As you know, the court handles adoptions and probate, civil, criminal, juvenile, family traffic, and self-help litigation assistance with interpreters, a grand jury, and regular jury services. As you know, the court, like our city government, encountered great cuts 8 years ago, and so they had to close 58 courtrooms. And so, what we're here today is to honor their leadership, which allowed them to continue to provide the services that are so vital to our community, and do so under those very difficult and challenging economic situations that all of us encountered 8 years ago. The credit for these efforts is attributable, well, to the entire court, but it's particular to the leadership of our outgoing presiding judge and the newly-elected presiding and assistant presiding judge, who for years have had to deal with the scarcity of resources that the crisis left us with. So, let me say that, in conclusion, that all the residents of the city of Los Angeles have been well-served by the leadership of the court. Is our city attorney here? Not yet. I expect Mr. Fier to join us here for this presentation. But all residents of the city have been well-served by the leadership of the court, dealing as they have with these challenging circumstances. We have with us today the outgoing presiding judge, Carolyn Kew, and I want to bring her up for a minute. And as we wait for the city attorney, let's hear from her at this time. Welcome to the city of Los Angeles and your democracy.
Yes, welcome. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
First Amendment is live and well here.
I'm glad to see the First Amendment is alive and well here, and thank you so much, Councilman. Thank you so much, Mr. Chairman, council members. We are very proud, on behalf of Judge Buckley, on behalf of Judge Brazil, and myself, we are very proud to represent our colleagues in leadership of the Los Angeles Superior Court, as you say, the largest trial court in the country. Especially now, it's very important to focus on our local and community issues. As a court, people come to the Los Angeles Superior Court with disputes that they cannot solve anywhere else, and we strive, even in the face of budget cuts, to be there for those people. We are proud to be a partner with the city, with the city government, in the service to our local community. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Well, thank you very much.
Mr. Fier, or anybody from the CA?
Yeah, he's not here.
Nope. Okay. Well, with that, let us do what we love to do. Governance requires us to do. Thank you very much. Come up here, and want to do one hand, then we'll go in the back.
All right, thank you very much. Let's give them another big round of applause. All right, let's -- colleagues, let's go ahead and turn our attention to the balance of the agenda for the regular agendized meeting, if we could. Madam Clerk, let's go ahead and take up those items. Colleagues, I understand that we have a request to take items 3 and 8, and hold those on the desk, so we'll go ahead and do that. The remaining items, we'll go ahead and put those now on the table for us, and those are before you. Do we have any requests to call any item special? Councilwoman Martinez?
Can I call items 3 and 8 special, please?
3 and 8 are held on the desk. Any other items?
Mr. President, just for the record, committee reports for 2, 3, 7, 8 have been submitted and circulated for council's consideration.
All right, seeing no other specials, colleagues, we'll go ahead and open the roll on the balance of those items, close the roll, and tabulate the vote. 13 ayes. Those are approved. Thank you very much. Okay, next item, please.
That brings council back to items called special, the presentations, or if council would like to go into the special meeting...
We'll go ahead, and we have a very special presentation from Councilmember Herb Wesson. So, Mr. Wesson, if we can -- I believe you've got a special guest here with you? And no readoptions. If you're going to take one of these home, you can't turn around and give it to somebody else, like a painter or anybody like that. So, you got to commit here. So, Mr. Wesson, all right, what do we got?
Good morning, good morning, good morning, Mr. President, members, and to all of the wonderful people that we have with us today in the council chambers. Today is Pet Adoption Friday, Dog Adoption Friday, whatever you want to call it. Basically, what I'm trying to do here is to find a home for this very deserving companion animal named Bo, correct?
Little Bo.
Little Bo. And Bo is about 1 year -- it's about a year old, and he's a Chihuahua Terrier-type mix. This is as large as he's going to get. He seems to be very calm and cool, and everybody at the shelter likes him. And so, here at the city of LA, I've been doing this program with help from Mr. Coretts for 10 years, and we have a 100% pet adoption rate. So, I'd like to keep that adoption rate alive. Most of the dogs that we get adopted are adopted by people that are here in the council chambers, or individuals that are watching us on council television, or listening to us on council phone. So, again, help us out here. Help us out, save Bo's life. We have shelters throughout the city of Los Angeles. We do the very best that we can to get each and every one of them adopted, but we cannot do this without you. So, if you think that Bo is the type of member of the family that you need, somebody that will give you unconditional love, please call 888-452-7381. And remember, every time you adopt one of our companion animals, in essence, you are saving their lives. I also want to highlight that, beginning on December 10th and 11th, our Animal Services shelters were having what they refer to as Whisker Wonderland. And so, Whisker Wonderland, you will get a reduced price when you adopt one of our companion animals. So, we're going to keep Bo... Wait, Bo, I want you to look in the camera, so everybody can see that face. We're going to keep Bo in the back for a bit, so if anybody wants to, you know, come and see him, or come take a picture, so that you can send it to your significant other, or your mom, or your dad, someone you need to get permission from, we'll have Bo in the back. But remember, help us keep our 100% adoption rate alive. Now, do you hear -- I want you to say that.
So, he'll go home today with his leash, his little jacket, he's neutered, he's microchipped, and lots of kisses.
Lots of kisses. So, anyway, Mr. President and members, thank you, but I think that a Bo would also be a great holiday gift, if someone is trying to come up with someone to give to someone that you love. Anyway, remember, Bo is looking for a home. Call 888-452-7381. Thank you, and let's find him a home.
And I got to say, with that face, if somebody brings him home today, and just so you all know, we're still talking about the dog... They're going to do, you know, this is -- that is one of the most adorable dogs that you've actually brought for pet adoption, so somebody will be a very, very popular household member.
Thank you, Mr. President and members.
Thank you very much. Thank you. All right, let's give it up once again, a 100% adoption rate.
You're good, Betsy. You are good.
All right, we've got another presentation from Councilmember Paul Coretts. Come on up.
Good morning, colleagues. As you're well aware, we're taking decisive action to truly show progress on helping the homeless population in our city. However, we can't do it alone. We partner with generous support of charities, religious institutions, and nonprofits. And we're joined by one such organization today who epitomizes selflessness. I'm honored to be standing next to Ravi and Jackie Singh, founders of the CALSA Peace Corps. Since 2009, Project Share a Meal has provided meals to needy, homeless, and hungry people 5 nights a week, totaling nearly 300 meals a night with its 2 pop-up food trucks. Project Share a Meal has embraced Sikh ideals and the ideals of all religions and faiths, which are dedicated to serving people. Recently, the CALSA Peace Corps has been honored by the White House, by the Federal Emergency Management Agency, and other federal agencies, along with 60 other groups in our nation as part of President Barack Obama's mission titled Building Resilience with Diverse Communities. I would like now to invite my friend of many years and Project Share a Meal volunteer, Chuck Levin, to speak, and then to introduce Ravi.
Thank you, Councilman Paul Coretts, my friend, and for everything that you do and the other members of the city council. Thank you for this recognition. Thank you for noticing what a wonderful charity. The city has wonderful charities throughout the city. This is one of them. They don't do it for recognition, they don't do it to be honored, but we appreciate that recognition. It does help, and it's a privilege to be here, especially in the beautiful chambers. I wanted to say that, as Councilman Coretts said, 5 nights a week, Monday night in Little Tokyo, Tuesday in Hollywood, Wednesday, Exposition Park, Thursday, Venice Beach Boardwalk, and Friday in Chinatown. Volunteers, thousands of volunteers over this 7-year period of time, have joined Ravi and Jackie. They're the inspiration, they're the founders, they're the directors, they're the generous philanthropists who've made this cause and completed this mission, to see to it that nearly 300 people every night have some hot, delicious vegetarian burrito and some water. Sometimes, we also have clothes donated by generous retailers and manufacturers in Los Angeles. So, I wanted to invite each of the members here to come out some night with us, join us. We appreciate your support, and you're going to experience something that, you know, we hope we can share with you. Before I introduce Ravi, he has a presentation. I just want to read the small part of our mission statement, and see if this doesn't sound like what all charity groups believe in. Here's the mission statement. "To engage and involve people, to embrace a lifestyle which serves humanity." So, that's what we're doing, that's what other groups do. Thank you for recognizing it, and I want to introduce Ravi Singh.
Mr. President, council members, especially my councilmember, Paul Coretts, I would like to thank all of you by sharing a question that was posed to one of the volunteers just last Friday by a social media interviewer. The question was simple. "Why do you care to come out every week and serve hot meals?" The volunteer was taken aback, because he had been regularly coming, and it had become his lifestyle. He had forgotten how it all started. He had to reflect on it before he could answer. So, this Tuesday, at our Hollywood Meal Service, he asked all other volunteers the same question. Everyone had a different answer. Today, by recognizing these volunteers, you are not only making a statement that you care as well, but as leaders in our community, you are inspiring others to care as well. It's not that myself and these volunteers needed any recognition for what we are doing, because none of us started this for recognition. We all feel it's just the right thing to do. We all have learned to serve without judgments. Sometimes, you get a thank you, and sometimes not, but who cares? As long as your conscience is telling you it's the right thing to do. Some in the community appreciate what we do, and some feel... Some in the community appreciate what we do, and some feel we facilitate their lifestyle or are in way of them connecting with government social services. We are neither facilitating nor are in the way. All we are doing is a triage and trust building. When someone is bleeding on the street corner, your human instinct is to help until paramedics arrive. That's what we are doing. We are helping until government services arrive. Just like the bleeding person cannot go to the hospital on his own, the help had to come to him. In the same way, this psychologically bleeding, and I repeat, this psychologically bleeding person on the street cannot go to government services because he has lost hope and trust in the system and the social fabric. Trust has to be built again through human connection that we aspire to build in order to take them back to productive life. Our volunteers get feedback through the human connections that get established. As a result of the accumulation of this feedback, we have developed a five-point path to take people from, from the streets to transitional mobile shelters, to the appropriate services for each individual, and to reentry sport that creates a sustainable framework and ensures that when permanent affordable housing becomes available for them, they are prepared to hold on to it and thrive as productive members of society. So these volunteers who are standing around me fill that gap every day. They are on, on your team. They are not facilitating or in, or in the way. In fact, we want to go to the next step, where government and volunteers work together as a team in taking the steps that are needed before these people can get into and sustain themselves in affordable housing. These steps are enumerated in our brochure that we'll be presenting, and a small, little footage of feedback that you will see, and we are providing that CD. Many, much of this feedback still had to be edited, and we'll be happy to send you later on, and that, these are the front lines, these volunteers and many others. There are thousands registered volunteers, there are 250 USC students, there's a special USC chapter that serves South Central every, every Wednesday and Friday. So, please take a little feedback from the front lines, and let's change the conversation, not just housing, 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 but also emergency, transitional emergency shelters. There are plenty of suggestions out there, and we'll be happy to work with you. We are on your team, and I thank all these volunteers and you for taking this step. Thank you.
Well, thank you, Ravi. Thank you, Chuck. Thank you for all the volunteers, for all the great work that you do in helping our neediest residents in Los Angeles. So on behalf of the City Council, and the mayor, and the city attorney, and the city comptroller, and the people of our great city, we recognize the achievements of Project Share a Meal, and its founders, Ravi and Jackie, and the thousands of volunteers who donate their time.
Great. We, we also have one speaker on the queue before you, before you jump to giving them their resolution and proclamations, Mr. Blumenfeld.
Thank you. I want to thank Mr. Coretts for bringing this important, uh, recognition forward, uh, to recognize all the volunteers in this organization. You know, there's a lot of, a lot of famous people. Emerson Gandhi have said some variant of service is its own reward, uh, and you guys are living that, that motto, and I, I wanted to recognize that. And I especially wanted to point out Chuck Levin, uh, who I've known for many, many years, uh, who it is no surprise to me that you're involved in this kind of, this kind of work, because that's the kind of person that, that you are and have always been, uh, and I just, I appreciate your service in so many different areas, uh, and wanted to, to join you in recognizing this group. So thank you all for, for being part of our team, as you say, and making, uh, this city a better place.
Well, thank you, Bob, for that, uh, recognition as well. It's now my honor to, uh, present this certificate on behalf of the city of Los Angeles to, uh, the Calsa Peace Corps and the Share a Meal program.
All right, let's give them another round of applause. Thank you very much. What's that? could.
Blumenfeld, Bonin, Buscayino, Sidio, Englander, Harris Dawson, Weezer, Coretts, Krikorian, Martinez, O'Farrell, Price, Rue, Wesson, 13 members present in a quorum, Mr. President.
All right, we'll go ahead and take up, uh, those items. Items, item 10 first.
Item 10 is an item for which public hearing has been held.
All right, so, uh, colleagues, we'll go ahead and take that item up now. Please open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
13 ayes.
All right, next item, please.
Items 11 and 12 are items which public hearings have not been held. 10 votes are required for consideration. Items 11 through 12 are items which public hearings have not been held. 10 votes are required for consideration.
Okay, we'll go ahead and open the roll for consideration on those items now, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
Uh, Mr. President, uh, prior to that, uh, just for clarification, item number 11, the administrative code should be referenced instead of the municipal code, and also there are cards on 11 as well as 12, sir.
Correct. And so we're gonna go ahead and open the roll for consideration, and we'll close the roll and tabulate the vote.
13 ayes.
All right, now those items are before us, and we have cards, so if we can call up Zuma Dog, John Walsh, and Eric Previn, whichever ones make it here first, you can go ahead. Zuma Dog, John Walsh, Eric Previn. This is for 11 and 12. We've got a minute on each.
Oh. Special, you mean?
On the special, 11 and 12, yes, sir.
Yes, uh, this is regarding provisions regarding to bonds to pay for judgments, and then 11 is funding for term extensions for outside counsel. I know quite a lot about this. I happened to have filed a lawsuit in federal court against the city of Los Angeles, and I won. It required the city council to approve a million dollars in outside counsel. I'd say the best way to ensure against the need for bonds for this type of thing is to follow the law. The federal government has provided laws for the people, for the disabled, for handicap, and for constitutional protections regarding civil rights. Now, the, you, you decide to just do things on a whim because you effing feel like it. Okay? I was told by, uh, the, the deputy mayor, you know, the city of Los Angeles runs the city, not the federal government, and if you don't like it, sue in federal court. So I did. So you had to pay my legal fees $1 million, you had to pay your legal fees $1 million, you had, now look what, and, and, and then you had to retrain the cops, and it took years, and it cost millions. So now you have to take out bonds, because you guys choose to consistently, one thing's consistent, you're gonna violate the law. Now you're even telling the president that, gee, we're gonna violate federal law. Get ready for a lot more approval of a lot more of this money, because one thing's for sure, the federal government proves they trump the city, and Trump's gonna, gee, the word trump's so appropriate. Trump's gonna trump your ass when you keep saying you're gonna violate federal law. It's gonna cause the need for a lot more bonds to pay for a lot more outside counsel for this type of thing. Follow federal law, Zuma Dog.
All right, next item, uh, next speaker, please, John Walsh.
John Walsh, blogging at HollywoodHighlands.org, or J. Walsh Confidential, tweeting at Hollywood Dems. These judgment bonds, the reason, most cities do not have to take out bonds. Bonds means you're broke. You have to borrow to pay the judgments. The city of, uh, uh, I mean, the LA Times, they won't do an article about all the judgments, people slipping and falling multimillion dollars. We, our judgments are incredibly high, so high that we have to borrow money, and this will make it even easier for them to borrow money. But remember, as bad as the city is, it's a hell of a lot better than Oakland. That's why I'm here. This is to provide more procedural flexibility. Well, you can, uh, I don't believe in procedural flexibility, that covers a multitude of sins. Now, additional funding, term extensions, this is 12, and new contracts for outside counsel. We shouldn't have any outside counsel. You mean, you can't hire people? You can't hire counsel to work inside? I don't know what happened to the previous city attorney. He retired at 46 years of age? That shows you how much money you can make on the side if you can retire, uh, as, as deputy city attorney. We do not need extensions, new contracts. We are spending more money on outside counsel than any city in the United States, or maybe in the world. We don't need outside counsel, and who's to judge, uh, these are the friends of these people up here, the outside counsel. Who's to judge whether they're doing a good job? Who? Nobody. HollywoodHighlands.org.
All right, thank you very much. Mr. Previn, one minute on each item, please stick to the agenda items.
Thank you, sir. It is Eric Previn from CD2. I live in Studio City, and I am running for mayor. One of the big concerns, Mike Fuer did not draw any opposition, is Mike Fuer's conduct with regard to these, uh, private counsel, uh, that he has been hiring. He has a group of treasured partners like Myers-Nave, uh, and several other are listed at item number 12, but Ogletree and whatnot, but, but the idea here is that the city council is charged with defending, uh, against lawsuits that are brought against the city. And I have detected, uh, a slight defect in the comparisons to the county, which has a much larger budget of $30 billion. This is only an $8.7 billion operation, and yet the city outspends by a tremendous multiple that can't be sure about because Krikorian keeps some of the information flowing and some is harder to see in terms of the actual numbers because of the attorney-client privilege, over which I have a significant case at this California Supreme Court. But what my concern is, is that by going into these closed-session meetings to discuss service defaults and problems, like for example, the Willets case, where for curbs and sidewalks for many years, we were compounding, and it resulted in a 1. something billion-dollar settlement that the public now is on the hook for, and the Independent Living Center one, where, uh, affordable housing, uh, characters were being advertised, information, you know, that they could get their wheelchairs into the, these facilities that were set up with this money, and we have $225 million lawsuit that we had, I wrote about that also in City Watch. And yesterday, $16 million in attorney's fees at item 13 was on the agenda, and today you have a, a little device to change what bonds can be used for to include federal judgments against the city. This, to me, is a abnegation of your profession. You, this body needs to step forward when someone says it's wrong, it needs to be fixed, and fix it, not engage in a five- or six-year lawsuit until after Election Day. This is a conduct that needs to be called out so that the public knows, if the public were in this room, sir, they would be appalled at the conduct of this body. Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. All right, that concludes all the cards on those two items. We'll go ahead, go ahead and open the roll on those two items, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
13 ayes.
Those are approved. We'll go ahead and, uh, adjourn the special and resume the regular agendized meeting. We're gonna go ahead and, uh, swing over to general public comment in the regular scheduled meetings. Zuma Dog, John Walsh, Eric Previn, Jacqueline Richardson, Susan Rocha, and Yvonne Michelle In any order. General public comment for one minute. You got it, Mr. Dog.
Thanks, Mitch. A pleasure. Hi, I'm for Mike Bonner specifically. I drove down here today just to talk about this issue. I usually don't talk about personal issues, but Venice Community Housing Corporation, Steve Clare no longer there, Becky, I gotta talk about it, bro. Uh, textbook is one thing about you want everything nice in your little arrangement, textbook, OCD, little thing, then there's the reality. Please ask Becky to take care of the situation I've been asking. They're allowed, they, they, they took the carpeting out upstairs, they put a family of three with a five-year-old kid. You've been seeing how I've been the last year or so regarding, mm, this is the issue. I don't want to say anything because I'm grateful for what Bill did and for what the city did, but I gotta tell you, it's costing me everything. It's costing me my life. It's costing me everything that I have, okay? And she's not being reasonable or rational. I believe that she's a little bit, she's a brilliant writer. Please call Becky Dennison and try to see, because other tennis, there's other issues. I believe that she's not using the money for the services, both building and personal, as required. Thanks, Mike.
All right, and before, uh, before we go ahead and open up to you, Mr. Walsh, one second, I've got, I know, um, I called Mr. Previn on accident, um, he already had his general public comments, so we'll go ahead and note that second card. And then Mr. Price also has a special, um, guest here that he would like to, uh, single out as well.
I just wanted to acknowledge, uh, her, uh, today. Maribel Garcia Ochoa is going to, uh, has been a Coro fellow with us for the past several weeks. She's gonna be leaving. She's a graduate from UCLA, uh, provided us with extraordinary, um, input, and was a, a, a true member of our team in every sense of the word. We're wishing her well, uh, in all of her future endeavors, and who knows, she may be coming back to City Hall. One never knows. But, uh, on behalf of a, of a grateful Ninth District and City of Los Angeles members, please join me, uh, in, in thanking our Coro intern, Maribel Garcia Ochoa, for her extraordinary service over these past several months here at City Hall.
Well, you know, and I want to say, uh, Mr. Price, you brought the bar up high. You've got flowers, a resolution. I'm seeing balloons back here, and I think those might belong to somebody special as well, so let's give her another big round of applause. Thanks for your patience, Mr. Walsh.
John Walsh, blogging at HollywoodHighlands.org. Not one negative word in this minute about the city of Los Angeles compared to Oakland. This is paradise. You know what? And incidentally, our mayor is Washington, is George Washington compared to the vile piece of crap they have up here. She has now said that it is a, uh, that they are, it's a witch hunt. It's a witch hunt. In other words, if you're responsible, if you work for the city of Oakland, you're responsible for 36 people dying, and you have a vagina between your legs, you don't, it's, that city is totally politically correct, you're allowed to do it. And I want to say CBS has done a fantastic job of combing this city for cases like, uh, up there in, in Oakland. They found one half-assed case, one half-assed. Our fire department is doing a great job.
All right, thank you very much. Next speaker, please. Good morning.
Good morning. My name is Susan Rocha, and my fur, and Divine Savior Catholic Church, and the LEPD Northeast, all of you are big bullies. Did you even make up a story? A heart-to-media story that had... The Jew didn't make up a story, a cartoon media story that had not one ounce of truth that it prosecuted me for holding a sign that I want peace and quiet in my home on a sidewalk in front of the Catholic Church on the sidewalk, that you prosecute me and that you thought that I would just shut up and roll over and plead guilty to something I didn't do. Well, that didn't happen. I went to a full-blown jury trial, pleaded not guilty, and was found not guilty because the event never happened, not, never, never happened. But that is a big bully that will maliciously and harassingly prosecute me for something that was just made up because you want to believe some church members and shut me up. Shame on you.
Thank you.
Shame on you, and you need to stand up for religious intolerance and racism.
Unfortunately, your minute's up. We got to give everybody equal time, but appreciate you coming here and sharing your thoughts with us. Thank you very much. Thanks for being here. Good morning.
Richardson. Some people don't want to read about Moses because he's too old, but we hear about him all day long through the newspapers, televisions, newspaper schools, and Mama. Even the police department shouts Moses, Moses all day long. Don't, 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 don't kill, don't steal, don't rape, don't lie, don't get jealous. If we don't listen, LAPD knocks on the door. Trouble if we don't obey the don'ts. Moses's don'ts is the same as LAPD's don'ts.
Yes, again, one minute is not enough. I'd like to encourage you to create an oversight committee that does reflect members of the community that LA can, USEP and other organized or organizations choose so that we can determine how the money from HHH is used. I'd also like to remind you that we are endeavoring to create the Skid Row Neighborhood Council. I would remind and encourage you to vote in favor of that. And again, for the budget, do not use your money to create or to authorize CIA torture chambers using electronic weapons that are being used against women in these witch hunts, black people. Some of the Jewish landlords are hiring their Hispanic undocumented employees to torture us. This is nationwide or international use of electronic weapons, and it is online, it is on record, so you cannot call us delusional. Do not use your money because we will sue you because we have proof that this is happening.
Okay, thank you very much. That concludes general public comment, so thank you for those holiday thoughts and cheer. So with that, we're going to go ahead and take the next two items together, three and eight. All right? So, and both of those folks have already satisfied public comment in committee.
Uh, Mr. President, just for the record, there's an amending motion on number three, and it has been submitted and circulated and is before counsel now.
Yeah, we're going to go ahead and duly refer all motions on these to both committees, to E2 and Budget and Finance. So all motions that are coming in on this, we've been going back and forth on these various items for around three years now. So those will be heard, six years, seven years, 10 years. Those are going to be heard in committee, and we've already received commitments from the chairs that they'll be heard quickly. So with that, let's go ahead, I'm sorry.
And just for the record, the amending motion has been posted a while ago publicly.
Correct, yeah. So with that, we're going to go ahead and open it up first with Ms. Martinez.
Thank you, Mr. President. Colleagues, I know so many of you are thrilled that we're here today transitioning from a zero-waste franchise system to a vision of reality. On the agenda, we technically have three committee reports, several recommendations, a sequel action, and a draft ordinance. But in reality, what we have here is an action that will result in a tremendous environmental benefits and set the example for the rest of the country. We will lead, it will lead in better paying jobs and benefits, cleaner trucks and fleets, more recycling and less waste going into landfills, all types of benefits that the city has consistently prioritized. But as, but as all these great things may appear and they're great accomplishments, it would not be fair to move forward at the expense of providing true opportunities for groups of people who have historically been disenfranchised. We must do better, and we must, must find a win for everyone. I firmly believe that the recommendations before us do that. Before I continue, I would like to ask the department to come forward and take a seat at the table and provide us with a quick overview of what we have here this morning, Mr. Saldivar. And then, Mr. President, if you would allow me after the presentation to say my remarks before we take any questions.
Absolutely.
Go ahead, sir.
Enrique, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Councilmember Martinez. We have what is the product of six, seven years, as you acknowledged, Mr. President, of a long, thorough, a comprehensive process on what is obviously a historic initiative. You deliberated all aspects of this early on, and then we went through the evaluation process that was thoroughly vetted in the Board of Public Works as well as in, in Councilmember Martinez's committee. We have seven companies recommended to be the franchisees that will be our partners in implementing this significant environmental initiative. We have come to call it the Zero Waste Initiative because in effect, as Councilmember Martinez, this will enable us to reach our zero-waste goal of 90% diversion from the landfill by 2025. It is that significant, it is that historic of a transformation that you're about to consider. And these haulers, the service providers that we are recommending to you are the best, are thoroughly qualified, and we believe and are very confident that they will help us achieve our goals. So we are asking that you approve all seven so that we can begin the implementation phase. We will take six months to get all of the planning ready on the implementation, and starting in July 1st, we intend to begin a transition of bringing all of the customers who are currently under the open market into the franchise model. And by January 1st of 2018, this entire program will have been implemented.
Great, thank you very much. Please.
I want to thank the sanitation team, City Attorney's Office, and everyone with the city family who contributed to this effort over the last couple of years. I want to give you my sincere thank you for and appreciation for your hard work. Now, as I mentioned earlier, we're excited to see this system be ready to be implemented. But as excited as I am today, I recognize that many of us were a bit apprehensive by approving this here today. You see, above, above all the environmental and workforce benefits that I supported, I was, my support was contingent on three things and three priorities that were very important to me. What does this do to environmental justice communities? Does this give real opportunities to women, minorities, and other small businesses and local businesses in our communities? And what does this really mean for local residents, particularly those who create, who have, who have to create good paying jobs for? This report was initially released, and most of the questions were not to our satisfaction. It's because, it is that reason that we challenged you, Mr. Saldivar, and we committed, the committee committed to making sure that together we came up with real steps that were going to move us forward in these three different categories. That's why the concerns that we brought up, it was very critical that we put teeth into these, into the recommendations that would actually result in improvements in these three different categories. This is why these contracts are worth billions of dollars, and we weren't here to rubber-stamp anything, or what we were trying to do was demand that in return, that the very people that we represent were going to get their fair share. This council is very diverse, except for women, but we're very diverse. The city is very diverse. But what's the point of any of this if we don't advocate for the very people that demand us to make sure that their, their issues are also being addressed? As I mentioned, environmental justice was an incredible priority for me. As we see some of these improvements, I want to make sure that the top of the waste stream with source separation requirements, which lead to increased diversion at the end of the, of the waste stream, I want to make sure that what happens to the middle of the waste stream? I want to make sure that EJ communities such as Wilmington and Boyle Heights and Pacoima and Sun Valley, that these neighborhoods where kids grow up, I want to make sure that when we're sorting garbage and that we're trying to figure out how to enclose these facilities, that these families don't have to grow up generation after generation seeing this kind of mess in their neighborhoods. So that was important for us, and I think we addressed that in so many of our environmental issues that we brought up, so that we know are no longer processing our trash and dirty MRFs and, and practices that we are blatantly, we see every single day blatantly disrespecting some of these EJ communities. And I'm very part of the work that we got, that we got, that we got done in that category. I also, as important as that was, to make sure, what is this doing to women businesses, minority businesses? How are we making sure that disenfranchised firms are being represented and that they have a share at this important, at these important contracts? And so as much as we tried to go back and forth to try to make sure that we are working within the restrictions of Proposition 209, I felt that the shortcomings of businesses, especially in the inclusion program, that all these things were being addressed, and I feel that we established a vehicle where the maybe we, participation rates will, will be as diverse as we're asking them to be and making sure that the participants, the rate of participation continues to grow. I want to also thank Mr. Blumenfield. I know you did a lot of work in this category, especially on the financial, adding the financial penalties for not performing. Thank you very much for including that. That was a step in the right direction. So colleagues, it is certainly, as productive as this approach is, I want to ensure that the public is not denied an opportunity to see that this was a, a, a process that took six years to do, a process that all of us had an opportunity to share in the discussion, and that the communities that we represent make sure that they're not left behind. So I don't know if any of our colleagues want to say any closing, any, any questions.
Everybody's up on the queue.
Up on the queue. Of course they are. Everyone's up on the queue. So you want to enter any questions before we move forward?
Um, I think we're going to go ahead and open it up for all the, all the members right now. So we've got everybody up pretty much. So we'll start off with Mr. Coretts. And I'm going to ask you to all be mindful of your time. We can always, you can always push your button for a second time if you've got more questions. Thank you very much.
Well, thank you, Mr. Chair. I also want to especially thank my partner on this issue, the former Chair of Energy and Environment, Mr. Wezar, for all of his leadership and inspiration and hard work that helped to get us to this place and get this off the ground. I also want to thank our fantastic new chair, Ms. Martinez, who was able to successfully navigate some difficult issues in the last few weeks to get us here today. What we've accomplished is truly extraordinary. We started out six years ago with a vision to get our city to zero waste, to provide protections for waste workers in an industry where that hasn't always been the case, to provide excellent customer service and predictable rates, to reduce truck trips and therefore vehicle emissions, and to reduce organics in our landfills, which will dramatically reduce methane gas emissions as well. And here we are now with a groundbreaking program. It's a very exciting time. Other cities across the country are already picking up on this and starting to emulate it before we've even completed the, the beginning stages of the program. New York City among them, which is sort of a good sign for us. We know if we've influenced New York City, we're already doing a lot in, in one shot. So that's all very exciting. We're a model for the rest of the country, hopefully for the rest of the world, and this enables us to have some great influence, especially on reducing climate change when the federal government may be going in the opposite direction. This is a great opportunity for us to push back. And we were six years ahead of our time. We thought of this six years ago, not anticipating what's happened in the last few weeks. I want to thank you, Enrique, for all your great work and your team, and Karen, and Dan, and everybody else that helped make this happen. I want to thank Greg Good for his work in helping to drive this forward and working on this for years and years, and all of our Don't Waste Coalition partners, from Lane to Teamsters to Sierra Club to NRDC, to Earth Justice and the LA Food Council, or I should say the LA Food Policy Council, and so many others who were involved. This is just a, a great day for all of us. Now, I agree, there have been some issues, and I agree with the concerns about many of them, and I'm personally committed that we have more participation from some subcontractors that are women-owned and minority-owned. But I think today, our task is simply to move forward a great program and make it happen. So I'm so excited. I thank everybody on the council that made this happen, everybody in the audience that made this happen, and this is just a great day. Thank you.
Mr. Wezar.
Thank you, Mr. President, and I want to first thank Ms. Martinez, who provided the important leadership in getting this important program ready for today's vote. I also want to thank the Bureau of Sanitation, as was mentioned by Mr. Coretts, for their hard work, and the Board of Public Works for hours and hours of looking through all the solicitations and responses, and certainly Enrique Saldivar, Alex Halu, Karen Coca, and Don Myers, all of them have been working for over six years to get us here today. I sometimes wondered how you're doing the other parts of your job, given the tremendous task before us here. And particularly the last two years, they have spent evaluating one of the most demanding RFPs ever created and negotiated here in the city of Los Angeles to ensure that we have reliable, fair, and cost-effective service for Angelenos for years to come. And we wouldn't be here without the persistence of the advocates from the Don't Waste L.A. campaign and their environmental, business, and labor partners. They didn't give up when it got complicated or kind of confusing as to what exactly was going on, and your advocacy certainly pushed the council to get where we are today. But perhaps most of all, I want to thank Mr. Coretts, when in late 2010, he and I, with other council members, and this is how long this has been going on, Mr. Bonner, your boss, Bill, stood up with us, as well as Mr. Alacon, calling for a franchising system for the city. And at that time, honestly, we didn't know if it was viable or if it was going to be effective, but I think we all learned a lot along in the process. But over the past six years of considering this issue, I am certain now more than ever that this is the right thing to do and that the benefits will be many. When I served as the Chair of the Energy and Environment Committee in 2012 and 2013, we led the council in adopting an exclusive franchise system, and that was done with still a lot of questions of how it would work. So we created a very detailed franchise implementation plan, which was also adopted by the council, and which set the expectations at the RFP that has been before us, that's come before us today. But you know, at the end of the day, there are few policies that really have the type of impact this policy will have on the city of LA. Indeed, this policy will change the face of LA. And let's take a couple of examples, as were outlined by Ms. Martinez, as to how this would change the face of LA. 70% of the waste coming from the city of Los Angeles comes from commercial buildings and apartments. Getting at the source of waste is the single most important strategy to cut down on our use of landfills. Oftentimes, the landfills are located in low-income communities that have been dealing with the effects for many, many years without any types of mitigation measures. And each zone is going to reduce its waste by at least 65%. Trucks will also be cleaner. Because our system was unregulated, air quality rules didn't apply, and Los Angeles would be a dumping ground for old trucks. While other cities demanded clean trucks, Los Angeles would get stuck with the old dirty diesel trucks in its hauler fleet. In these contracts, that will change, and at least 400 dirty diesel trash trucks will be switched out for cleaner ones. Finally, and not only that, we will end the crisscrossing of these dirty trucks throughout the city of LA, which causes additional pollution. And rates will be fairer. What we found in researching the industry is that rates are widely different across the city, even for the same services and sometimes even for neighboring businesses. Today, we will change that, and we will bring fair, predictable, and reasonable rates to all customers without punishing people for doing the right thing and wanting to recycle. So thank you all for... So thank you all for getting us here today. This is certainly monumental, certainly something we should all be proud of. And in the last few weeks, I certainly learned a lot about how this city functions. One of the things that opened up my eyes was not only that we are passing a great policy, but that we have to do more in terms of our contracting and subcontracting for diverse firms. Our policy needs to be-
Be mindful of your time, please.
Our policy needs to be reexamined. Our policy is not resulting in the types of accessibility and participation that we want from all Angelenos. And at the end of the day, I think with the amendments that were made in the committee, we're going to ensure that that happens here in these contracts. And last but not least, I think this also made me aware that we need to review our Arizona policy. We've given out so many exemptions, and it will allow us now to go back, look to see if it's working, to see if the boycott has had impact in a state that has proposed anti-immigrant policies. And at the end of the day, these issues that have brought this item to the forefront of talking about some very important diversity issues, immigrant issues, those issues are just as important and should take as much priority as everything else we're doing in this city. So thank you all very much. This was certainly enlightening along the way, but at the end of the day, this is one of the most important policy issues that this council will be passing in the last few years. Thank you.
All right. Next order is going to be council members O'Farrell, Harris, Dawson, Busciano, Price, Bonnet, and Blumenfeld, and I know there's more coming. O'Farrell.
Thank you, Mr. President. I just want to rise and praise our colleagues, Jose Wezar and Paul Corretts, for having the vision in 2010 to push for this very important measure and see how long these efforts take, six years, almost seven years actually, before we see this exclusive franchise hauling system put into place. But the effort has been worthy, and it is laudable. I also want to thank our Chair of the Energy and the Environment Committee, Nury Martinez, for refining the ordinance based on the equity concerns that have been raised over the last several weeks. And this puts us in really good shape before we start awarding those contracts and putting this into action. Colleagues, now more than ever, with the dark clouds gathering at the national level, we have to seek and lead on local solutions to problems that are affecting our environment at the local, state, and national level. Climate change is not a question. It is upon us. I am particularly gratified that in the district that I represent, which is over 80% renters and a high percentage of that will be impacted very positively by this new regulation, the significant decrease in greenhouse gas emissions that those who live in the apartment buildings that I represent, the fact that particulate matter, which affects the lungs of young people and puts them at a statistical disadvantage early in life. I represent a district that is crisscrossed by freeways. We have our issues, just based on clean air in the 13th district. And lastly, the reduction of the impacts on our infrastructure. Now, that just makes fiscal sense, that we're doing all that we can to preserve our streets with fewer trips. So this is good in so many different ways, and I'm just proud that this city has taken a leadership role with these incredible advocates, Don't Waste L.A. and others, who have united to support this and push for this, because it is the right thing to do and it is the right time to do it. So let's make this bold move into the future. We'll address these concerns, and I think we're going to be in very, very good shape moving forward. So again, congratulations, council members Wezar and Corretts for seeing this way back in the day, and I think this bodes really well for this body and the city and the entire state. So congratulations, and let's get this approved. Thank you.
All right. Thank you very much. Councilmember Harris Dawson.
Thank you so much, Mr. Chair and members. I just want to first give a big congratulations to the Chair of our Energy and Environment Committee, facing very tough personal headwinds, stepped up and got a really big lift done. I'll take the unusual step of asking everybody in joining me and giving her a big round of applause over these past few weeks. I got a, I recently got an education on what it takes to move something of this magnitude, and so we're, I'm really, really grateful and proud of you for getting this done. It's a big deal. It puts us in position to leave the city to our children and grandchildren cleaner than we found it, to leave the air cleaner than we found it, to have more middle-class jobs that people can raise a family on than existed when we started this process. I'm really also proud of all of my colleagues and the folks in the Bureau of Public Works and in sanitation who've helped work with us, councilmember Blumenfeld and Wezar, to come up with a solution to the glaring problem or the sour pill in this very, very, I think, sweet package. And that is the minority and women-owned business contracting. I'm looking at a sheet of paper from the department, minority business participation less than 2%, women-owned business participation less than 1%, small business, very, very low numbers. We're in Los Angeles, the most dynamic and diverse city, one of the most dynamic and diverse cities anywhere on planet Earth. If we can't get it here, get it done here, dare and hope for anywhere else. I spent some time talking to the folks in New York who are working on this. They're looking at us to see if we can have the environmental accomplishments, which I think we've done a great job on, to see if we can get the accomplishments with labor, but they're also looking at the minority and women-owned business participation. And so we need to provide leadership on that front as well. And so I am happy and proud to be able to support this, because I know there is a pathway to deal with this very, very important issue to all our communities. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Mr. President. I too want to rise and echo the excitement and support from my colleagues here and the Bureau of Sanitation on doing everything we can as a city to achieve our goal of becoming a zero-waste city. And I supported the creation of an exclusive franchise system because I too felt that it will overall improve our quality of life here in our city. Granting one company the exclusive right to dispose of solid waste for a geographic area does a number of things, of course, reduces air pollution and wear and tear in our streets and alleys, gives a city great leverage to negotiate with required, the haulers to provide services that benefit our neighborhoods, and another reason why I supported that, we knew that it was going to increase some revenues through franchise fees. However, in the last several years, knowing that we're going to see some increases in revenue, some, the contracts before you unfortunately don't mandate community benefits that will help keep our cleans, our streets clean. And to you, Mr. Salvador Enrique, can you explain to us why wasn't there, in a time where we're raising rates, we have not dedicated some of these community benefit revenues to illegal dumping, empty curbside trash cans, cleanup, having these haulers mandate to clean up litter and debris as part of the franchise agreement? Because none of these contracts before you do just that. They fail to provide these benefits. There's no commitment that the additional revenue will be generated to provide public benefit. I'd just like to get an answer from you.
Well, we definitely have provided for the funding to be there. You know, I want to thank my negotiation team. They negotiated a 20% franchise fee, and the funding is there. The decision on how to utilize that funding is yours.
Why wasn't it in what's before us today? What do you mean? Why was, did you not include any of, any of us at the table?
It hasn't been decided on how it is to be used. The funding is, will be there, councilman.
Okay, so it hasn't been decided, the funding will be there. We've heard this yet again, that we're increasing rates, and yet we don't know where these dollars are going. How do I explain that to a small business owner on Gaffey, whose rates are going to go up, and yet her sidewalk's trashed? Years, my residents have been picking up trash and picking up the slack where the city has failed to ensure that the neighbors and neighborhoods are clean and livable. Salvador Lara, clean Wilmington. Steve Kleigen in clean San Pedro, taking up their own time, working with our community-based organization. They've seen streets blocked by illegal dumping, trash all over the parks and playgrounds and neighborhoods. Residents in San Pedro have to take their own time on their Saturdays to form neighborhood cleanups. Neighbors in Harbor City, in Wilmington, and in Watts have to do the same. And yet, there's been little discussion about all of this with rates while the rates are going to be increased. So it's simply cheaper to bury all of our trash in the landfill than to recycle it. We should recycle our trash bills. We should recycle, and all our trash bills should reflect the true cost of our disposable consumption-based economy, but not at the expense of public cleanliness. So we brought in Mark Thomas, the CAO brought in Mark Thomas. His report here, in my hand, clearly states that public cleanliness is, should be a top priority, March 2015. But obviously, we need money to ensure that this report is implemented. Mr. Wezar, you led an effort on the cleanup, greenup initiative. That ordinance was passed. Yes, we are going to green our city with this franchise agreement, but I strongly feel we're not going to clean up our city with what we have before us.
Mr. Busciano, if you could just-
And lastly, as a police officer for 15 years, I've seen firsthand the connection between eliminating urban blight and reducing violent crime. A neighborhood that's filled with abandoned waste, litter, and graffiti creates an environment ripe for crime, and that was a core philosophy of my former boss, Chief Bill Bratton. The quicker we're able to respond to 311 calls, the less frequently we have to respond to 911 calls. And I need a commitment for my residents that the revenue raised from these contracts will go towards making a visible and positive difference in their quality of life.
Thank you, Mr. President. I too want to just rise and thank my colleagues for moving this issue forward. Also certainly want to acknowledge the role of Department of Sanitation, Public Works, the city's family, the contractors, advocates, and others. I think it's important that we're moving forward on the policy today, but I certainly want to echo the vociferous concerns raised by the chairwoman and my colleagues, that we're just not doing enough to ensure that small businesses, women-owned businesses, minority participation is at the greatest level possible. I think we also need to explore the system where dumping and trash is being picked up on the grid basis, and maybe that's something, again, that sanitation needs to develop. I don't think it should, that we should constantly have to be going through 311 to get emergency services. Numerous times in the past few weeks, my staff has had their request closed out without being picked up for reasons including needing a different vehicle, or the dumping is not visible, or some other excuse. So I understand the frustration being raised by Busciano and others, especially when the ticket item is closed and the garbage is still on the street. So I think we just need to have a better way of allocating resources to get that trash picked up when it gets down. It's an uphill battle, one that I'm very familiar with, and again, I just understand the concerns being raised, not only by colleagues, but also by neighbors. That said, everyone has a stake in moving this project forward, whether you're a small business, or an environmentalist, or a resident, or just someone looking for a job. And I want to certainly, consistent with the discussions made and the commitments that have been made by the contractors, I want to work closely to help make connections with those small businesses that can perform with opportunities that are there. And so we're going to be looking closely to make sure that we expand opportunities and training so that individuals are able to take advantage of these opportunities. I think we all are going to be looking very, very closely at the quarterly reports that are going to be submitted. And again, I just want to acknowledge the extraordinary work of our chairwoman Martinez in this effort, and other committee members and stakeholders who have worked on this. Like you, I don't want this to be another good fake effort. We want it to really be something of substance. And again, while I support this project moving forward, I don't support business as usual, which usually means that the little guy or the little girl is left out. I think the action today makes a good deal, even better, and we look forward to the ongoing collaboration, conversation, and accountability that will result from this project. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Councilmember Bonnet.
Thank you, Mr. President, and thank you to everybody sitting here who is here to testify and support this today. This has been a very long time in coming. It has been years since Mr. Wezar and Mr. Corretts proposed this, but it's been even longer since this was an idea that was pushed by the people who are sitting on these cushioned bleachers here in this chamber. Folks who did work in our neighborhoods, with our neighborhood councils, with environmental organizations, with labor organizations, with community-based organizations, and created the idea, and then the momentum, and then made it a reality, and made it strong enough that a few years ago, our colleagues could propose this. I want to thank you for that, and it has been a very, very long time coming. It has taken so long that there are those who were on that side of the rope are now on this side of the rope, helping make it happen, Mr. Good in particular. This is a, not perfect thing, but this is a damn good thing to be doing in the city of Los Angeles. This fixes a lot of problems. We have, in every neighborhood in this city, a trifecta of doom. We have, as a result of the current system, we have too much pollution, we have too much noise, and we have too much traffic. It slows down people moving through our streets, it causes untold noise disrupting our neighborhood, and these ugly, dirty diesel vehicles pollute all of our neighborhoods. And they come from throughout the entire city, and then way, way too many of them go to Ms. Martinez's district, which gets the incredible impact from everywhere. That is not a good system, and that needs to be fixed, and this begins to fix that. It takes giant steps towards fixing that. Then there's the condition of workers, both the working conditions and the wages. There are some companies that are very reputable, and then there are some companies that demand, that require us to step in and put in a franchise and system so there can be regulations. There are some companies, I remember hearing the stories and seeing the videos when all this started, where there are examples of sorting facilities that are, that could have been chapters out of an Upton Sinclair novel. And it's important that government step in and fix that. And then there's our part to do, to reduce our waste stream, to make it so that not only do we not have districts that bear an unshared burden of our landfills, but that we're not stuffing stuff again and again into landfills, that we are recycling. And this is the biggest step that the city of Los Angeles has ever taken to promote recycling and get things out of our waste stream. It is absolutely phenomenally important. And as Mr. Corretts said, and as Mr. Harris Dawson said, this is becoming a model. This is becoming a model nationally. Other cities are looking at, how can we solve these same problems in our city? And they're looking to Los Angeles, just like they're looking to Los Angeles on a lot of other issues, like wages, like on sustainable energy, like on gun control. We're a leader, and this is another example of that. This is not perfect. There is still more work to be done on a number of the issues that have been raised here, but it is a phenomenal beginning. And this is at a much better place than it was even a year ago, because of the work of the Energy and Environment Committee and Ms. Martinez in particular. As Mr. Harris Dawson said, this was a heavy lift, and it's a heavy lift on the easiest and sunniest of days. And Ms. Martinez did this lift at a time that was very difficult, and she made this a much better proposal, and I want to acknowledge you and thank you for doing that. The last thing I just want to say is that the coalition that did this, the coalition of community, of labor, of the environment, has done something big. And Los Angeles- And Los Angeles is an example. The California Republic is an example of how there can be pockets of this country at a very dark and scary time, when unspeakably bad appointments are happening in Washington, D.C. We can show how things can be done better. We can keep moving the ball forward here and doing things well here in Los Angeles, and this is an example of that. Thank you.
Councilmember Blumenfeld.
Thank you very much. Colleagues, this is big. This is transformative of what's happening today. And a lot of folks worked on this. I want to especially thank Chairwoman Martinez for being the closer on this. This has been kicking around for years, you know, since when many colleagues here around this table were working on this issue. We mentioned Mr. Weisar and Mr. Corretts back when, working hard on getting this ball rolling. This is gonna go in the history books, along with minimum wage and our homelessness plan, as something transformative that Los Angeles City Council has enacted. And I'm proud to be part of the council today as we move forward on this. You know, I think about the history on this. Back when you guys were starting here in the council, I was in the legislature back 2011, and I was hearing from a lot of folks about, who lived in apartment buildings, that they couldn't recycle. They wanted to recycle, they wanted to be part of it. And I put together a bill, the Renters' Right to Recycle Act, to try to address that. And I remember back then, the statistics were shocking. It was, you know, more than 60% of multifamily dwellers didn't even have access to recycling. Only 15% of the waste in those multifamily units was being diverted. We made some progress on the state through some of those efforts, but here in Los Angeles, we're taking it to a whole new level. We're not tweaking the percentages, we're not creating more access points as is being done in the state. We're moving to unlimited recycling here for anyone in Los Angeles. That is something to be proud of. It's good for the environment. We've talked about it. It's not just the recycling element about it, the air quality aspect, the traffic issues, the quality-of-life issues that will be enhanced for every Angelino by this proposal is historic. And I'm proud, again, that I'm here to be part of it. The jobs aspect, we've talked about to some extent, but, you know, recycling and composting, and eventually, we're gonna get to composting in this initiative. They say between two and 10 times the jobs for just, that we get out of that than sending our waste to a landfill. That's big. That's getting people employed in this city. That's important. That's part of our overall mission and initiative, as well as the environmental aspect. And then, as we've all talked about, the big concern that we all share about the shamefully-low amount of subcontractors for minority and women-owned businesses. Well, this initiative has a cure for that. We're gonna move forward on that prospectively. We're gonna be able to not just figure it out, but we're gonna demand that our haulers do better. And built into this initiative is teeth, as the chairwoman was talking about, financial penalties if they don't comply. That is historic as well, to move forward in that direction. So overall, this is a major initiative that will go down in our small history books of how we've changed Los Angeles. I'm proud to be part of it. Commend the chairwoman and everyone here who has been part of it, who is gonna take this vote today, and all of the folks as well, whether it's Don't Waste L.A., the mayor's office, Greg Good, of course, sanitation for really Enrique moving the ball on this, countless hours of hearings, of discussion, of refining, and L.A. is leading. As we always, I like to say, great ideas, they start in Los Angeles, and then the winds blow from the west to the east. And this is going to transform Los Angeles, and we're gonna start seeing transformations throughout California and through the rest of the country, and we know that this is where it starts. Thank you, and I urge an I-vote.
Councilmember Sidiya.
Members, let me add my voice to the chorus of those to express my greatest and most profound appreciation for the leadership of Nuri Martinez. She has stepped forward, she has been a leader at a critical time for this city, but also a critical time for her personally, and I can say nothing but I have, but complete admiration for you, and tremendous love for you. And your presence brought this forward, it gave us stable leadership, and the city is indebted to you. And so I want to first, first of all, acknowledge your leadership. Let me acknowledge the city attorney, who has worked with us in the final hours of this to make this a better proposal. It is far from perfect, but it is a better proposal. Let me summarize what everybody has said, Mr. President. This is great for the environment, and the leadership and the initiative of the environmental community and the environmental justice community is to be acknowledged. We're at an interesting point in the history of our country right now. The changes that need to take place, the progressive growth of our nation is gonna be led by cities and states. We're in a special time. We can no longer look to Washington. Mr. Weisar and I had talked about the boycott of Arizona, and it may be time to evaluate it, to change it. We may be shifting our eyes to Washington, D.C., and a boycott of Washington, D.C. in fact, as we move forward. And so what we're doing here today is very important, because this is the way change in the world is gonna take place for the next period of time. Locals, grassroots, progressive leadership, progressive elected, the labor movement, integrated and intimate to the base. I want to acknowledge, as I did the other day, although somebody said I got a little overhat, over excited about it. I want to acknowledge Ron Herrera, for being the working-class hero that he is, for his For his leadership, I want to acknowledge the Teamsters. My father was a Teamster, as he was a steelworker. Because what we're doing here today in the area of work is that we're making sure that we grab a hold of technology and make it serve us, not eliminate us. And so that's the real choice that's confronting the world, technology versus jobs. And we know that when jobs are union jobs, that those are livable jobs, and that people can live with dignity and respect, they can have a decent salary, that they can buy a home, and that they can look forward to a better life for their children. And so I applaud the leadership, the aggregate leadership of the Teamsters, of the labor movement, and most noteworthy, of Ron Herrera. Let me try to bring a sense of proportionality here today, because this is not perfect, and the concerns that have been raised by Mr. Harris-Dawson and by Mr. Busciano are shared by all of us here on the council. We had an opportunity to help close the divide between wealth and poverty. Our small-business program is designed to make a sustainable economy. That's why we have goals of 20% for every contract that we put out. In this RFP, 12% was designated for local, small businesses, for sustainability, to integrate, to make sure that, as I noted, and I frequently note, that a tap card like this, that we use in the subways, shouldn't be printed in Singapore, but that there's printers right here in Borough Heights, immigrants, who could get these contracts and create jobs for the young men and women from Homeboy Industries and train them in trades, that there are opportunities to take advantage of the resources that exist in the city. And so when we started this, we said we had a goal of 12%. 12% would be subcontracted. That's $442 million of wealth that would be brought here into the city and shared, and to make sure that this divide between wealth and poverty that exists and burdens our nation, that again, locally, we would address it. And yet, we failed to do that. We're not at $442 million that we can anticipate coming into the local economy. We're at 18. And so, with the leadership of Nuri Martinez, Jose Weisar, the city attorney, we have constructed amendments that will help make this better. And we say to you that we look forward to moving this forward, that this is not the time to make perfection the enemy of good, or even great, but that this can and must be greater. And so, it is with that that I ask that we move this matter forward, and I am proud to vote for it. I thank you.
And then, to close, you're gonna...
No, then to Mr. Wesson.
Okay. I just wanted to, before we close up, I thought we were gonna go to closing after this, just one last time, you know, when we started this campaign, the Don't Waste L.A. Coalition, its partners, Ron Herrera and Greg Good, just to, as we take the final vote, before we take the Vonnant vote, should it be successful? Just want to give you one last acknowledgement. It took a lot for you guys to bring this to council, not knowing where we were. A lot of folks were naysayers at the time, a lot of bumps along the road, but it was a long journey, and congratulations to you all for believing. Thank you so much for the work you did. Greg Good, your persistence paid off. I think you're in this council meeting every day for the last six years, making sure this passed. Congratulations, buddy.
Yeah, Mr. President, I'm sure that Ms. Martinez will close out based on the fact that she did so much hard work, but I do want to rise so that I can thank you for all of the hard work you did under very painful, painful conditions, and, you know, the work that you've done will not be forgotten. But I also want to let the haulers know that I stand with Ms. Martinez when she stood in committee and indicated to each and every one of you that your numbers, where it relates to minority participation and small-business participation, is an embarrassment. Okay? In fact, if it weren't for the environmental community, if it wasn't for labor, a lot of us probably would have said, let's start all over again. So I just want to say that to let you know that we are serious, that we are watching, that seven, eight of us on this council are people of color, and this is not gonna sit well for us. So we're gonna afford you the opportunity to do the right thing. We're gonna afford you the opportunity to make sure that as we check this on a yearly basis, that you're making your goals. And trust me, we're gonna be like Santa Claus, we're gonna make a list, we're gonna check it twice, gonna find out who's naughty or nice, okay? That is something that we are definitely gonna do. And the last, the real reason why I wanted to get up, and I hope somebody said this earlier, if not, I do want to say it, because it's personal. Now, with all due respect to Greg, and Greg, you worked hard, and you should receive a pat on the back, but when this idea was really percolating through these halls, up and down the steps, in the elevators, it was Maria Elena DeRaso who opened these doors. Because with her, instantly, you got objective, the members were objective in their listening to you make this case. So she gave you instant credibility. I don't know if you remember, remember I said, "He got beady eyes"? Remember I told you? I said, "He's got beady eyes, I don't know if I could trust him." But she assured me. She assured me that you could be trusted, but you ought to be, you remember, you ought to be commended for your hard work. And I was here, along with Mr. Weisar, so I just want you to know that I know why I opened my door, and I know why so many other people opened their door, because you were knocking. So again, I want to commend Ms. Martinez, and Martinez, kick it over to you to close.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Wesson. And by the way, Mr. Wesson, Enrique didn't have a single gray hair before we started this process, I just want to point that out to you.
Oh, thank you, Mr. Wesson, and thank you, colleagues. I really appreciate your kind words. These have been very difficult times for me personally, and if you were in committee on Wednesday, you know that I did not mince words, and some people walked away feeling hurt, but I will remind you that from the draft implementation plan till today, we had 22 different council motions and 12 additional amending motions, and some of the very issues that are you bringing up never were brought up during this period. So I want to make it very clear that in the process of the six years that we've been working towards this, some of these issues were not brought up. So I just want to make sure that we're honest about our intent here, and I want to make sure that as we're moving forward, that we fix things, as opposed to simply just complaining about them, because that's what adds frustration to the six years that we've been towards, that we've been working towards this effort. One of the most important pieces that I left out during my opening remarks is the mandatory local hiring obligation. If you know anything about me, you know that I hate trash, and I hate talking about trash-related issues in my district. I hate it, because I grew up in an environmental justice community, so I know what it's like. But one of the most important things, and I feel we make people whole, is by giving them a decent job, is by the very people who sometimes don't have those padded resumes, the very people who don't have, you know, they're not blessed with formal education or advanced skills, that this is an opportunity for those people who have tremendous work ethic in our communities, that have the eagerness to want to get a good-paying job, that most likely live in one of these EJ communities, that they finally have an opportunity to get a good, decent-paying job, and we finally pay respect to these communities that have been overburdened by trash for decades and decades and decades. And that, to me, is what's so valuable about what we're doing here today. I would be remiss if I did not thank Mr. Weisar and Mr. Corretts, because six years ago, I was not fortunate enough to be behind the ropes. I was sitting in the audience as an EJ advocate. And to be your council member and to now chair the committee that is moving this forward in these such difficult times for me and my family is a very, very proud moment. So thank you, gentlemen. This is personal for me, and you led the vision, and you led the charge six years ago. I want to give them a big round of applause to Mr. Weisar and Mr. Corretts for not letting up. Thank you very much. The requirements that you have here today have teeth, they have financial penalties, liquidated damages, and certainly no guarantees that a contract were gonna be renewed or extended without earning it. The years of secrets and the old boys' network and members-only is over when it comes to this industry. We need to make communities whole, and we need to respect them. The additional requirements also end the years of lip service, and we finally put a commitment to be honest to these communities and hold haulers and this city accountable for what we do moving forward. Colleagues, I ask for an I-vote.
All right, with that, we're gonna go ahead and, we're gonna go ahead and open it up for the vote.
I just have a question on 3A.
Quick question.
I can, Mr. President. So Ms. Martinez, I appreciate the amending motion here on 3A before you, and I appreciate you being responsive to some of my concerns that I had in committee with instructing Bureau Sanitation to report on recommendations for the use of portion of franchise revenues for programs and activities that address enhanced quality-of-life concerns such as illegal dumping and proactive bulky item pickup. This is exactly what we've been talking about, some of the concerns that have been raised from my small businesses and throughout neighborhoods in my district. In fact, Mona Sutton, just, who owns an omelet waffle shop on Gaffey, just emailed this to me. Her rates are gonna go up about $165, so we have to ensure that while rates are going up, we ensure that these small businesses get these added benefits and community mitigation dollars as well to keep our streets and corridors clean. So Ms. Martinez, if you're okay with that, I'd like to add a friendly to this, to have a timeframe, 45-days report back on 3A to both committees.
Make it 60.
60, you prefer 60?
Well, you gotta build the holidays into there, you know. Remember, Mr. Wesson's making a list, he's checking it twice.
That's right.
All right.
Do you want 45 or 60?
So 60-day on your amending motion.
Sure.
Thank you.
Okay. So, that was not a motion in a second, it was just a commitment, just making it clear that we're not reopening public comment, and that was just an understanding that the chair has respectfully said she would hear it in the next 60 days. chair has respectfully said she would hear it in the next 60 days. So, with that, we have the two items before us, colleagues. We're gonna go ahead now and open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote. That's approved, it's unanimous. All right, Madam Clerk, what other items do we have before us on the agenda?
Council has motions for posting referral.
Those will be posted and referred.
The desk is clear.
Thank you very much. The desk is clear. Colleagues, are there any announcements? There are no announcements. Does anybody have any adjourning motions? Seeing no adjourning motions, that concludes the council meeting for today. We are officially adjourned. Thank you very much, be safe.